Regular meeting on the 28th of September and the special meeting from October the 19th. On October 19th. If you had a chance to look at those. If so, and there are no corrections, I've entertained action first of all on the minutes on the 28th. Do I have a...
Motion to approve?
Motion made by Goodman to approve. Seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor? It's four zero. Thank you. How about on the 19th? Do I have a motion for those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Goodman, motion approved. Seconded by Fitzwater.
Yeah, sure.
Those in favor of the verbal four zero. Thank you very much.
For both of you guys.
And the, uh... The minutes for the, uh... Board of Works on September the 9th and the 23rd for information only. Going down to communications. Virgia, here from Hope. Virgia Smith, you have the floor.
You get two of us.
Oh, you get two of us? Double?
Yes. I'm Bonnie Dunbar. I'm the president at this time of Fulton County Hope. I've been president for the last two years. I don't know, where am I supposed to stand?
Anywhere's fine, Bonnie.
Okay, thank you.
You're on TV, Bonnie.
I wanna... I know, that's why I said, do they want my back or my best side?
This is theater in the round, right, Virgia?
I'm just gonna pass a couple of these out here for you. This is our resource guide, but we're not here looking for anything today. We're, we're here to thank you and Virgia will take care of that. I just wanted to let you know, uh, in reference to what she's going to talk about, and I've been saying this to a lot of the meetings and places that we go. The people that Virgia has been helping through Hope for the Homeless are people that cannot be helped anywhere else. If you don't have an address, you cannot go to your trustee. If you don't have an address, you cannot go to United Ministries. If you don't have an address, you can't go to United We Stand Ministries of Akron. Unfortunately, we don't help them. So, I mean, I say "we" because I'm part of United We Stand Ministries of Akron. So I kinda know these things, and this is why it's important that we have started this program. We're hoping because we are just a resource group. Fulton County Hope is a resource group, and we are trying to pass it on to some organization that would like to take care of that because it is a lot of work for Virgia. And Virgia's gonna talk about a few things, but thank you for letting us come tonight, and she'll take over from, from here.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I thought that you would like to know how I spent your money.
Well, first of all, let me congratulate you because very few people do. Thank you for coming and letting us know this. Thank you.
If you look at the paper that I gave you, with your money, I put ten adults and seven children under roofs, and that is for down payment and first month's rent. You'll notice that Oakwood Apartments was only a hundred and twenty-one dollars, and that was the full amount because of the lack of income from this young man who has some challenges but has custody of his son. And I asked at the time if they had, you know, if he needed anything, and he said, "No, I think we'll be fine." So I got a call back from him, "Can you please come over and help me call two of them to get my electricity turned on?" I went over, and I found two sleeping bags on the floor. I found some paper bowls. I found some plastic silverware. And I looked in the refrigerator, and we had some milk and a couple things in the refrigerator, but not much. And other than that, there was nothing in that apartment. So, um... Since we started this Hope for the Homeless, I found that a lot of these people will have maybe the backpack on their back, and that's basically what they've got. And so, uh... I was able to furnish his apartment like I have done with all of them and with donations from people that we collect at St. John Lutheran. And in that, I'm saying that not only did we provide beds and couches and chairs, and that we also gave him some groceries, and I have clothing there, and I got dishes and silverware for him, pots and pans, whatever it takes to run the house. And we keep it at, at St. John Lutheran. We keep those things on hand. So, um... And the rest of them there, you can see that most all of them have children. A lot of them are, you know, some are single, single parents. I'm not sure that I've got, maybe one of the couples is actually married. But, um... My main concern is the children. You know, we heard a report last year that at the high school there were fifty-six students that report into the counselor every night to tell them where they will be because they don't have a safe environment at home. So, um... We do, I've gotten people out of cars. I've gotten people that are along the railroad tracks. I helped a girl the other night that Scott had a backpack, and we did get her into rehab, and she's called me and said she's doing well. So, um... Unfortunately, um... Most people look at the homeless as saying that they've got a problem with drugs or something like that. Statistics show that the ordinary population, about nineteen percent, have a problem with some kind of drugs or alcohol. Homeless, it only goes up to twenty-six percent. Some of the people that I've put into housing are older, and I got one lady out of a situation where she was being abused by her son. So I've got her in her own little place now, and she's thrilled to death to be there. And we had a couple of ladies too that are older that we put into a safe situation. So, uh, you know, there's a lot of these cases that is not... And my one requirement for all of them is you either have to have a job or you have to have enough money coming in to pay the rent because I don't want to set them up to fail. It seems to me if you can't pay the next month's rent, then what's the point of the whole thing? And not only that, but you have landlords then that look at you and say, you know, "I'm not sure I want to put any more into it." But I do have some now that will call me when they have a place due. So, uh, at this point, uh, I have zero money to work with. So it's on hold until we can get additional funds, and we're working on trying to do that. So I thank you very much for the money. I just wanted to let you know where it went and how we spent it.
Well, thank you very much. And you probably have heard this said once before, but this council was very eager to help out when they heard you were gonna manage it.
Thank you.
That spoke volumes to this group. You have a pretty good track record, Virgia. I mean, that husband of yours hasn't helped you back one little bit.
I know.
He and I are very good friends, by the way, out there, aren't we? We go way back.
Yeah, way back.
Yeah. Uh, no, all they had to do was say Virgia Smith, and it was, wasn't that right, folks? We were just all, everybody up, and we said, "Yeah, this has gotta be a good thing 'cause we know you do it right."
So, you know, if in the future, you know, you have some funds that you can help us with, that would be much appreciated.
Well, see, I'd been surprised if you hadn't asked that. You always knew how to close.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, thank you very much.
Well, to be honest with you, as far as right now, Todd, we're stretched right now. We're down to the end of the year.
I know.
And, but certainly something to come back and see us next year.
Even though I knew it was the end of the year and all that.
You wanted to report.
I wanted to report back how I spent your money, which I think is the right thing to do.
Absolutely, absolutely, and you and Bonnie, God bless you both.
He does every day.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we thank you. Any questions or for Virgia or Bonnie?
Yeah, if you have any questions, just ask.
You still looking for any donations of furniture and pots and pans and kids and stuff like that, right?
Right, right. And if they could be delivered, it would be appreciative, but we find helpers. And a lot of times, like Saturday, we were working the pumpkin patch, and she had it in the back of her car and just took it right to the client's apartment. So we don't, sometimes it doesn't even get in the church because it's so needed.
Now, your, uh... Your furniture and your pots and pans, are you utilizing goodwill or how were you going?
Oh, no, word of mouth.
Oh, no.
Just word of mouth?
Oh, yeah, people call me, they call the Hope line, and I had two calls last week, and they just call and say, "I've got some things for you," and people from garage sales, if they have some leftover, or if I'm happy to happen to go to a garage sale, and I just fill up my car, and away we go.
Yeah, and I was, I spoke to Compassionate Health that asked me to come and speak at noon, and I came away with a whole carload of stuff. They had brought pillows and different things.
Wonderful. Anything else?
Rochester is very generous down, really. I think that most people here just don't realize the extent of the people that, you know, are sleeping at the laundromat and, you know, various places around town.
Virgia, sixteen years ago when I started down the trail on the city council, these stories would come up, and at that time, and I suspect it still goes on, there were a number of children who would report to high school every day and get a shower and change clothes along with their breakfast every day. And some would go home with teachers to spend the night. I believe that was stopped, but there's a lot of that, yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilman Wilson, thank you for coming by. I passed this out before we go down to the salary ordinance real quick. I passed this out, I don't know how many of you noticed this, but this was a... Not to be snarky or anything, but this was a notice that was in the paper last week of a three-point-five million dollar bond. That is my commentary there. This is one of the differences in fiduciary dealings of the city and county. We would never bond these items. These are what we call disposable assets. Cars, trucks, what have you. You guys, those of you who've been there for a while, have never seen a bond or anything like that. We, we have two bonds out, and they are for resources that are going to be sustaining for a long time, and they're on the utility side. They're not backed up by tax money, so backed up by utility fees. And that is a water tower that we built south into town and the upgrading of the waste treatment department. Those are all hard assets that are gonna be around for a long time. Not a vehicle that's gonna be expired in six, seven years. Anyway, I just wanted you to take note of that, that we would not ever go down that route. That's, that's, that's a different route to approach financing your, your operation. Okay, the, uh... We'll, we'll delay on the city projects and the ARPA plan and go right to the salary ordinance. Thank you, Todd, for coming by. It's ordinance thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one. We've had the first reading, is that correct? No, we have not had any of you. Okay.
No reading.
Do I have a motion for the...
I will move that we had the first reading by title only.
Okay. Moved by Goodman, seconded by Smith. Those in favor, first reading by title only, okay.
Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one, ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the City of Rochester, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, any discussion? Do I have a motion for the second reading of ordinance thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one?
So moved by title only.
Okay, seconded by Wilson. Smith made the motion, seconded by Wilson. Those in favor? Okay, all right, unanimous?
Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the City of Rochester, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-two.
Any discussion?
Andy, just a question. We don't have to, we don't have to read this in its entirety at any point, do we?
No, if, the way your ordinance is written is that the second one is the only one contemplated to, the only, second reading is the only reading contemplated to read in entirety, and if it is unanimous, that you not do so. If no one objects to it, you could always do all three by title only.
Okay, any discussion? I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules and have a third reading by title only.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor?
All right, ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one, and ordinance fixing the salaries for the employees of the City of Rochester, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-two.
Those in favor of adopting the ordinance thirteen...
I'll make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, those second?
Goodman, uh, motions, yes, seconded. Those in favor of adopting the ordinance? Marty, are you voting? Marty's abstaining. He made the motion, but he's abstaining.
No, you don't discourage making the motion.
Yeah, I can't.
I was waiting for you to say opposed.
Are you, are you the new Burns? The Robert Charles Ford.
That's my friend.
Yeah, right. For the public, it is a six-page document, and nobody really wants to sit here and listen to... No, I agree that much, so. It's for your benefit as much as ours.
Although we do love to hear Brian read.
We know it would come back for, it's a benefit to Goodman.
Well, yeah, I mean, he reads much better now than he did.
That's right, Todd, thank you. If you need to excuse yourself, you can do so. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Todd. I probably appreciate it more than anybody, otherwise you'd be meeting us again later this week for this.
So I signed this, do I need to sign the other?
Yeah, go ahead and sign if you wanna, go ahead and sign all of those.
Good, good point.
I do not have a copy of the resolution, that's on the agenda.
Well, I am not surprised by that, but Chase has my one-only copy. No, it wasn't because I didn't get it until, what time did you email that to me?
So is it just two to sign that, the resolution?
Yeah, 'cause you weren't here for the passing of the minutes, so, you know, unless you want... You can sign those if you want, but you weren't present for those.
I've read them, so.
I don't know where the documents ended up.
You wanna stick around just a second, sign the resolution, and we'll find out, take you.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
It's, uh, resolution zero-six dash twenty-twenty-one. This is, uh... This is entered in, this is part of the project list. This is part of the project list. Yeah, we haven't passed it yet. He signed it off.
We probably copied just, if we need it.
Resolution zero-six, days twenty-twenty-one that we're introducing here. Couple of weeks ago before I left for my Indianapolis surgery, we had a meeting. Marty was present down at, down at your office, and, uh... Commissioner Lewis and I got a discussion about the lights downtown. There are nine lights that are, that surround the courthouse that are... They're the same vintage as our downtown lights, and I wanted to make sure he was aware of what we found when we were replacing these lights downtown. We haven't, we haven't gotten those any too soon. They were eroding at the base. We thought we might be able to keep a few of the poles and use them elsewhere. That's not the case. They're, they're that corroded, and somewhere along the line, one's gonna fall over. And we were concerned at about the nine that are left around the courthouse, and there was some discussion, as you know, as to who had the ownership of that. County had looked at their electric bill and said they couldn't see where they were paying anything on it. They thought it was clearly the city's responsibility, and I said, "Well, we haven't seen anything." Duke, I called Kevin Johnston, and he was kind of up in the air on it. He said, "Mayor, we're trying to straighten these things out. Communities like yourself were going down the list and trying to straighten all that out." It was apparently something that was not just unique to us. When we went through the whole community for the five-hundred lights, I think we surprised them on a couple that they found. They had, the records weren't that great. So anyway, kicked it around, was shot in, in the Board of Works, and I'm not gonna get into a contest with the county over that chance of having one of those fall over and wipe out four cars at the car show, or worse, kill somebody or whatever. So I've asked that this resolution be considered by the council, that we take the ownership of it no matter what. And I talked to Brian about this today, Lewis, and I said, "I'm gonna present this to the council. Might as well bundle them into the twenty-seven that we have and, uh, take care of the electrics and the maintenance on them moving forward, and then we'll put it in a resolution form so there'll be no question in the future." It won't be a gentleman's agreement or something on the back of a cocktail napkin. It'll be a record. So that, that's what this resolution is about. And then at some point in the very near future, we come to the matter about funds and debt to cover the rest of the nine. It also includes, uh... Randy, yeah, you're back there. Was it four speakers would be part of that group of nine? Would also, is it four, five?
Three.
Three.
Three, okay. So beautiful cheapers, yeah. Three speakers, and of course the C Network and all that will be part of it as well. Anyway, that's what the resolution's all about. I would, uh... Well, we wanna have some general discussion before the reading of it, if we can. Does that sound like planned to everybody?
Can you kind of have a figure as to how much it's gonna cost you?
I, we have, we've, we've got, uh, we've reached out for quotes from Michiana on it. I'm just guessing, just from what the twenty-seven ran. Probably another nine will probably cost us eighty, eighty-five thousand, something like that. It's just a guess, though. The other thing you run into is, um... Obtaining the polls and everything, so they're, they're researching that for us right now. It would probably be, we probably wouldn't get it accomplished till the first quarter of next year. Is that safe to say?
I, based on what Randy reported, I would say easily.
Was it twelve weeks for a lead time on the thing?
Lead time was twelve.
Yeah. Twelve weeks. We haven't even got the quote back from Valmont yet, so it'd be twelve weeks after we order.
Yeah. And, uh, so it'd probably be in, I mean, at some time in the first part of next year before we can get it done, but, um, I'm just here to tell, they don't owe us anything. They've been stretched to the limit. And I don't know how many of you have seen the downtown lit up at night, but I had the opportunity the other night for the first time to be driving downtown when they all came on at once. That's kind of interesting.
Hello?
Hello? Boom! They're all, they all came on at one time, which is the timer ready and the, the eye, so.
They are nice. Does this give, uh, city ownership of everything downtown with the exception of the corner of Ninth and Main? 'Cause that, those are state polls, right?
Well, we've, we've included those in it too, so that we can, we have it all. Just have it all. That's nine, nine total.
Okay.
And by the way, the state has also given us permission to paint the four traffic signals at Ninth Street the same as the rest of ours. Yeah, they're, they're real good about that as long as they don't have to pay any money. Hey, that's a good idea. You're not gonna charge us for that, are you?
Yeah, we'll look nice.
Yeah. If there's no more discussion, could I have a motion for the reading of resolution zero-six dash twenty-twenty-one? Some moved? Do I have a second? Moved, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor, okay, four zero?
Resolution number zero-six dash twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the common counsel of the City of Rochester, upon the representation and communication of its mayor and certain officials of Fulton County, has determined that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rochester, the city confirmed its intent to maintain certain streetlights near the Fulton County courthouse. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Rochester shall maintain as its property the Ninth Street lights that surround the Fulton County courthouse, and a copy of this resolution shall be provided to the Fulton County auditor as confirmation and clarification of the city's intent.
Okay.
Is that something we could pay for this year or are we...
No.
Next year, next year?
Twelve weekly time. Just remember that. Twelve weekly taxes.
I don't know if we have the money to pay for it.
Way ahead of you.
I already done had that conversation with Ted. Oh, thanks for asking, Chase. No problem.
Do I have a motion to accept the resolution? Some moved, seconded. Moved by Goodman, seconded by Thompson. Those in favor of resolutions zero-six, twenty-twenty-one, and it's, and thank you all. I think in talking with Brian, I said this'll make both of them asleep better.
Yeah, no kidding.
Boy, Randy and...
Just gonna say, make sure those two have signed everything, please.
Randy and Dwayne came in with a trailer full of those polls, and they said, "Come out here and take a look, you're a snare." It's amazing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Didn't we have, don't we have a picture of that, Randy?
Yeah, but I didn't bring one piece.
Infrastructure, 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 you know?
Chase is gonna be saying that most soon. Just tell Randy, she can read.
Okay. Thank you all. Old business, ARPA plan and ACT tool submissions. Oh, yeah, I'll go back to them. Talk about the old business and I'll scoot back to the updates. Thank you. Any, you know, you guys met on the ARPA funds and the, and the Baker Tilly website. Anybody have a chance to mess around with that?
Checked earlier today, and I saw that Chase had filled out his survey. I did my survey, and Marvin, his was in process. I don't know if they...
Davis, Marvin?
Kay Davis started one. I just looked before the meeting. Kay started hers. Who else?
You sent it out to department heads?
Yeah, department heads were all included. All board members, all board presidents were, with the exception of... I think I included one on the redevelopment pitch, I don't remember who. And all of you and myself.
I haven't started mine yet. I just got back in town yesterday.
Oh, my gosh, there goes our quarrel.
That's okay, that's a good journal.
Come on, guys, I may have to sit between you.
What's our, what's our hard deadline for that, to get our survey done?
I think it was Monday.
Moving target?
The target, the target we were trying to get was to have our plan ready by December thirty-first of this year. So Mr. Goodman's request on Tuesday was to have it, all of the submissions and stuff, in for this meeting so you guys could continue a conversation.
I know.
So you're fine.
I told him last Tuesday that wouldn't really be an option for me, so.
Yes. I recall that conversation.
He, okay. Marty, of course, has been a lifelong insurance man. Is there a grace period for that?
Well, considering it's...
No grace.
You know what? It's in the council's hands. Or I'll just say, let me ask the attorney. I am not an attorney. That is my, that is my clause.
Could, could we...
We need to get it done, like within a week.
I'd say, if you guys work on it, if you guys take this and work on it, and then we bring back at the November meeting, I would think that would be...
Hopefully, we have more than four of us here.
Right. So it's your job as the council president to send a little reminder out and put a fire under...
I didn't read your job description. It took me a while.
It was in your job description. Send the fire.
Yeah, it doesn't take very long, just, you know, looking for projects and allocating where you think the dollars should go, and then those...
It's pretty intuitive. I mean, it really is.
They've made it pretty user-friendly.
Good.
Keep in mind, when you do it and you're allocating funds, we've already allocated 50,000 to the COVID test site at the county.
Correct. Okay, so if, if we can have that pretty well whipped up by the next meeting, I made a note on that. See down that road and... Okay, update on our city projects very quickly. The, the waste treatment plant upgrade, which is our, by far, our biggest project, our $18 million state revolving fund loan. It's moving along on target. Again, the completion, it's, it's not an overnight project by any means. The completion is mid-May of 2022. They're telling us it's still on target for that. There are some, a few hip humps on some of the materials. We will get an update on all of that with the Crosby Construction folks and the Commonwealth Engineering Firm on Friday. That'll be our next work update that we, we meet every other week during the chamber and go over and talk about any issues or such. So that, that's moving along pretty good. Happy to say our Schoolview lift station project came right in on time. And there's some pictures here that I wanted to pass out, show you all of the lift station.
I did forward those to them.
Did you forward these?
In email, yes.
It's originally, really looks nice and came out to be a really nice project. I got the county to hook on last Thursday, so they've been on a little, little under a week so far. And it, it's been in operation since the eighth. And the TGB construction folks have just did a wonderful job. They pulled the last vehicle out today, so it's, it's all complete. The new salt barn that we're having built is, still looking at, by, by the first part of November, we'll get our quotes together from folks who are giving us quotes to construct it. And should have some work starting on that in November. So we're still, we're still on date. Date with that, we like to get that cleaned up before the impala weather comes, so we'll be pushing pretty hard on that. We do have a backup plan for retention of our salt and sand in one of Marcus's buildings out at the waste treatment plant, where he's got some room that we can temporarily hold it. So we've got that pretty well covered. We talked about the downtown lighting project. So we've got some odds and ends there that we are, we are completing on it. Those of you who were at the car show probably got a lot of compliments on the speaker systems and everything. It did turn out, turned out very, very well. We have some of the accoutrements to finish up to be able to get the Christmas decorations up. The fixturing and everything to blow off, so we'll be working pretty hard on that, correct, Randy?
Yes.
That's a good answer, Randy. Randy's doing a good job with all that. The lids for the digester, the covers that will take place of the pole barn that fell down. Working towards the completion of that on, by, by winter. And Liberty folks have cut a check for us. We are, we are moving forward with that. That's on, on track. Again, some of this is at the convenience of the folks and the materials that are available. Parking lot behind the Hazen building, so if you've seen some construction going on there. Randy and Dwayne were pretty heavily involved in that the last week to 10 days. And happy to say they, they completed it before the big rain came, and boy, it did make a difference. Really looked good, didn't it?
Yeah.
The, the final phase of that is the paving of it. There's a big square there that needs to be paved, but all of the infrastructure is in and complete and working. That'll be done tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. The next project will be in regards to drainage. They'll be taking a look at Monroe Street in front of Advanced Magnetics. We talked about that at one time. But our, our cammering of that area, which had created the situation down on Ninth Street in front of the bank and such, was attributable to a change in the size of the drain line, of the stormwater drain line to accommodate a telephone cable that was run across there years ago. So we're going to do some more due diligence on that, probably break the street up to see how, what was involved there. This, this cable may not even be something that's being utilized anymore, analog type stuff. We, we just don't know. But like actually drop the size down to be able to get under the cable, well, yeah, pinch that hose, you know?
Yeah.
So we're gonna take a hard look at that, and we're also doing some drainage review out in Manatah Heights, correct?
Correct.
We're looking at some things there that we ought to be able to utilize the same technology that we used behind the Hazen building to help relieve some issues out there. Until, until enough monies are put together that we can do a full bore upgrade on our stormwater drainage, which begs us the question of Main Street. We have an investigation going on right now with an engineering firm to revisit the Main Street project. And we, next, half of next year, we want to finish the Main Street from where the state paved. And we'll finish clear out then to Monticello Road. Along with that, we'll be taking the street up and upsizing the stormwater drain, going through that. Everything goes to Main Street. It all comes to Main Street and heads out north. Plan would be to upgrade the, the main artery and root cut any laterals coming from east or west to try and alleviate some of our issues, so. We hope bigger is better. And we've got an engineering firm studying that with the force right now. Okay. Monday, the paving of the alley right next to RTC will be taken care of. That's scheduled to mill it down to an acceptable level and redo it. I don't know if you've been down there lately. It'll jar your teeth. We're gonna get that taken care of. We're still, we're still evaluating and, and working towards the two mains that Derek had mentioned to you about, the water mains that need to be looped, that we have discovered that were put in years ago. And they should have been looped to help with rusty water and what have you. And we're going to move forward with that, and hopefully some of the ARPA funds can be utilized for that, be used for that. We've got, I think I told you all about Cheryl Morpheu, who is the leadoff of Mayor Todd Barton that we met about, oh, six, eight weeks ago. When we went to Crawfordsville, shot in, Rick Figlio and I went there and talked with Mayor Barton about his economic development program in Crawfordsville, and this lady who works for him on a payback for performance basis has just done some really, really neat things. We're working with her now on some things here at the city. Most recently, we've had some meetings with, she's come to town with Matt and Jill and figure at RTC and talk about the broadband effort here in Fulton County and Marshall County that RTC has been involved in now for some time. It's amazing. Now, all of a sudden, it is, boy, it is the hot potato for the state for the rural areas, broadband. We gotta get broadband to the rural areas. Well, we got a lot of people at the state who don't know, and I discovered this in working with Ocre, Denny Spinner and such don't know what we've been doing. Suzanne Crouch, when she was Lieutenant Governor, she was blown away to find out what was happening here in the broadband area. You got Wi-Fi here? Really? Yeah, we've had it for a while. So we're, we're heading on November the 3rd, and the telephone company's sponsoring it, but we've reached out. Cheryl and I reached out to the state dignitaries that we know, and we've got Lieutenant Governor, some representative for a showcase of Rochester Day, and Joe's gonna do a broadband presentation and such. And it's where the dignitaries that are coming, Denny Spinner, he's the former mayor of Huntingburg, and he's the president of Ocre. Jerry White, who's our Ocre Community Affairs Representative. Scott Rudd, the director of the Indiana Broadband Office for the State of Indiana. David Beer, who is part of the Indiana Economic Development Council. And a big hitter by name is Sarah Salisbury, who is the IEBC State Site Selection Manager. This is a lady people contact at the state when they're looking for a place to look, place to come or whatever. She's never been to Rochester. We're gonna have her here and show the show. And when they leave, we will be more than just a pin on a map. And that's November the 3rd. I've asked our president of our council to be there that day, also as a representative of Fedco. Rick Figlio is gonna be there as the board of works representative, also on the Fedco board. We've got Jillian, who's gonna be there. She's, she's participating in part of the presentation, as well as Janet Vance, who's gonna talk something about the schools and the quality of life here in regards to the schools. So these people are gonna get a pretty good dose of, this is what Rochester's all about, so we want to put our best foot forward there. So that's...
Sure you want me to?
Well, I was, you know, I was really debating on that, I, you know...
We did have a very lengthy conversation.
We did. We kicked it around lots. Well, he is the president, and he has been the president for some time.
The chimpanzee was busy.
Yeah.
You didn't hear that?
Did that, did that go across the TV? Chester the monkey? Is that what you said? It wasn't available? So, no. And, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna take Sarah around and show her all of the sites. Everybody else gets a presentation. She's gonna get to go to sites and look at different places around town. And, and it's gonna be put on out at the RTC's maintenance garage. So we're right there, and we'll be, be able to take a peek at the industrial park and that, that. So anyway, we're just introducing Rochester. Then the last thing on the project list that I wanted to mention was I'd sent all of you some information about the Meadows, Manatah Meadows. Did you get your email?
No, was that, when did you send it?
Monday? Yesterday? No. Okay.
Don't look at me. You didn't involve me in that.
Okay. I'll get you. Really? Okay, get you a hard copy. You got it?
That was Monday.
Monday? You see everybody on the list?
Nope.
You chose the wrong reply, you don't think?
Yeah, you didn't send it to the council.
I sent it to, I think I sent it to each of the... Oh, anyway, okay, get you a hard copy. We completed our due diligence in regards to the presentation, beginning what the, the plans were. The Commonwealth and Baker Tilly involved in doing the due diligence as to what was going to be involved. And sent that off, and I know Andyus, the developer, and Christopher Janna, I know they got their copies. Basically saying, you know, here's what would have to be done to fulfill this, this increase in population in South Endtown, because you're looking at a minimum of 2,000 people to be serviced by this. The infrastructure development for just the waste, wastewater and, and water only, 14.3 million.
And, and just to preface this, those are not, those are very high level, high 30,000-foot view numbers that there would be more work done to get, to finalize it, but that is the...
She says high level. What she means is they're the bare base of what we looked at. That doesn't cover public safety costs, like doesn't cover anything.
Doesn't cover stormwater or drainage, because that's going to be another large issue that will have to be addressed with that particular area.
Yeah, we sent, we sent copies to the county folks as well. And one of the comments, Shota had mentioned it, this is stormwater. One of the comments the engineering firm made was, county needs to really take a hard look at this, because you're taking 80-plus acres from a permeable situation, or pervious situation to an impervious situation. And that's a Minno Creek issue. And unless it's done properly and to the, in other words, put some money into it, it'd create a lot of problems for the folks that are already involved with Minno Creek, vis a vis a Bellwood acre or whatever. It's gonna be a lot of water, a lot of drainage. So there's just some, some infrastructure things that need to really be studied and looked at. And I'd say, the developer reached out to me, said, thank you very much. He said, we're, we're going to be going through this. And it was, it was, it was a very complete, complete study, broken down step by step by step by step. So I will get copies in in your hands, and I'm sorry you didn't...
Is that the one you texted, message?
Yeah. Yeah. You got that?
Yep.
Did you get it to?
I'm reading out, depending on where it was.
I know, me too.
Oh, okay, okay. Probably on the desk.
It may vary.
No, no. I, I sent it by text to everybody, a PDF by text. Yeah, so. But anyway, we've, we've got that, got that going in. Like I say, they are studying it. The next step would be a sit-down meeting to discuss it in, in more detail. The letter states that this is something the developer would be on the hook to take care of. We don't have $14.3 million, and we certainly wouldn't want to put it on the back of our utility customers. That said rates. So, but, and that's the way we have operated with projects smaller than this. We've not seen anything this large. But the developer would pay for the infrastructure, turn it over to the city, and then if there's some payback in the, the future relative to people coming on board, and we're also gonna utilize it, then there can be a rebating program. And that, you know, with the help of Baker Tilly and Commonwealth, that's pretty much how folks deal with it. So we've gone forward with that. That's a...
City's pretty busy.
We are busy. We are very, very busy. We are very, very busy. It's keeping Shota out of the bars and drills, you know?
That's all right.
Now, gotta have a pretty good energy level, but it's, Shota says to me the other day, she says, "I'm tired." I said, "Oh, gosh, okay."
No, I believe I used the word, "you have exhausted." You have exhausted.
Well-
You're tired of it.
I don't know.
Yes, I'm just exhausted.
I don't know. Most of you have been around for the whole run of what we've been doing, and, yeah, there's a lot that we've done, but there's a lot that we're still wanting to get done. And, Shota, I just appreciate, you know, I keep giving you all the praise and credit. You, you, you're hanging in there and doing a good, good job. You really are.
Thank you.
You know, she keeps me from falling off the face of the earth when, you know, you don't even, you're not even thinking. No, no, I'm not. I'm not even gonna go that route. So, you know, it's, it's a good thing. You're doing good stuff. Appreciate it. Okay, that takes us right down to our reports from some other folks that are doing some good things. Chief Butler?
Good evening. For the month of September, vehicle fires, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Auto fire alarms, one in the city, four in Rochester Township. Brush, grass fires, two in Rochester Township. Calls for smoke, one in the city. Accidents, two in the city, three in Rochester Township, two in Richland Township. Medical assists, 26 in the city, 13 in Rochester Township, three in Richland Township. Gas leaks, two in the city. Cans of calls, two in the city, two in Rochester Township, for a total of 65 runs, and we conducted one drill. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
How's our project with the baby box going?
Um, I've got one bid back from one contractor, I'm waiting on another one. I received a phone call from the builder of the box, and it is about complete, so I'm trying to get contractor nailed down that the Knights of Columbus accept and paying for. I did get with Cottage Watch to do the alarm system, and they can handle that. There will be a small monthly alarm monitoring fee that, that we'll pick up at the department, but other than that, we already have the baseline with, we have an in-house alarm that doesn't go anywhere, but he'll be able to work off that and, and send it, or it'll be monitored from that point.
Great. Good work, chief. Good work. Those of you know what that project is all about, then, okay. Any questions for the chief? Thanks, Tom. Chief Shots?
For the month of September, I'll give you the clip notes for it. We have 15 accidents, 32 warnings, 49 offenses, 46 case reports, 528 calls for service, 18 lockouts, eight towed vehicles, and 17 people in car skid. And then I don't, I don't have the crimes lodged. I'll get you that next one. I didn't get around to it today. Last Thursday, we've been going through the application process, trying to hire one more to get us back up to full staff. Last Thursday, we took two to the Board of Works and, for interviews, and the conditional offer was given to Bryce Michael for, for employment. He's from Lowndesport. He's 21, just got married, homeowner. Seems like he's got a good, good head on his shoulders, so we'll see how that comes through. I, I have high hopes for him. Brady Briggs, our most recent hire, helped me go to the academy probably after the first of the year. I'm not sure if it's gonna be the January session or the early spring session yet. I have a feeling that, I think that the January session is already full, so it'll probably be early spring before he goes to the academy.
You know, I, and I was remiss in, in this, you know, you pictures of Brady, I think Shota took some.
Got it.
Wes, would you like to have a picture of the swearing in?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. And I apologize for not noting you. But another fine young officer, just, you've done a good job, Chief Shots. You really have. There's a lot of folks out there not wanting to be police officers these days. Doing a good job of finding some good talent.
A lot of people not want to work out there.
Well, that's true.
Not wanting to be a police officer.
That's, that, too, which, which makes having police officers more important. But you've done a good job in the recruiting process.
Make sure they're not taking any calls from Florida.
Well, I mentioned this at the Board of Works meeting, and I wanna make the same statement here. I had the opportunity to go over to Warsaw several times this year for the wagon wheel productions, and I really enjoyed that. And each time I'd go over, I'd see this huge city police officer who was a canine officer, and he found it, found out I was mayor, and we'd chit chat a little bit, and we'd go, and he finally said to me, and he said, "You know what, Mayor? You have a class department." Wow, that's high praise coming out of the Warsaw group, so you there be complimented, chief. Good job.
Appreciate it. It's been a group, group effort, and we've got a good group.
You should do. Any questions for the chief? Okay, Randy? You wanna come out here, so you're on TV?
Not really.
Not really.
Not really. Close up. Come on up here, Randy. We wanna, wanna, people wanna see who you are.
I think that was a rhetorical question, Randy.
Come on up here. Did you guys ever realize that I'm so shy? Okay, go on. Okay, it's, it's right on you.
I've been helping the street barn. I also met with Louis Backhoe, Brand Tech, and Machinery Contracting, for estimate on what the nine lights would cost, and less concrete since we're not sure what we're gonna have to cut out. You're looking at $119,690.
Okay, I was a little off.
And that includes an electrical panel, which we'd already met with Robin from Duke Energy, and we'll put one in by the pole between the annex building and what used to be the old Kroger building. We can tie in there, and then we'll end up boring under these-
Pick up all those lights, yeah.
Yeah, we'll bore under the state highway. But yeah, we're helping the street department, and we have a November 2nd MDOT meeting for a field check, so the MDOT people are coming up, and we're gonna walk the 2.2 miles of sidewalk that's on the 2023 federal highway program.
Yeah, and then we tend to forget that, but there is a grant coming up for 2023 that we've obtained for that sidewalk situation throughout the community.
That's all I got.
Well, it's plenty. You've been doing good stuff. You and, you and Dwayne, you've been going like a house fire, and, good crew.
Nope.
I'm sorry, not a house fire, bad choice of words. Good crew. You're doing good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dwayne's in Indianapolis, so he, and Marcus is out of town, Derek's- Coaching. Right, down in Indianapolis. So, that, that's all we have tonight. Reports of committees, uh-
FEDCO, first one.
Pardon me?
FEDCO, it's your first one.
FEDCO is the first one, okay.
And I don't have a report.
Oh, yay, yay.
Kind of in transition, aren't they?
Well, I, I mean, I haven't been there for, it's probably been over, still over a month, you know, we were dealing with-
Figlio mentioned that, yeah.
Well, we were dealing with the COVID, and then right after that, we got our vacation, so I'm back.
He said to tell Goodman his shoulders are getting pretty weak.
And I didn't get ahold of Tiffany for the minutes, usually catch up with her.
Okay, okay. Well, they're in a, they're in a state of flux right now, trying to figure out what's gonna happen with the FEDCO director and such. Israel, all militarily resigned, so it's kind of in a, yuck in the air right now as to who's gonna be hired and what they're gonna do, so. Okay, we'll go right on down to Park Board.
I was in quarantine at that time, so I did not-
You were in quarantine?
No, I'm quarantined.
No, I'm quarantined.
Sweet.
Okay.
All in peace. Keep going.
Well, Park Board's moving forward. Raise your hand if you have a report. Yeah, if you have a report. Park Board's moving forward on basically wrapping up the, the season. One of the things that has been accomplished here that wasn't on the list tonight, because it's pretty well wrapped up, and the two ladies, Andy, Andy Lee and her sister Wendy's aunt, took it right over the goal line, the splash pad situation in the main park. Wes had a nice picture in the newspaper of it, and it's all raring to go for next year. The water department, the water board voted to pick up the tab for the water, and the Board of Works picking up the tabs for the, the drain, the drainage part of it, so it'll be in our tent, you know, it's gonna be a Manito Mountain situation. We will be maintaining it. Not, not sure what, what the future process will be, that we had the splash pad, but there's been some discussions, including the chief being involved, and we might wanna fence that, fence it in. Lots of things happen, you know? So, we're, we're gonna be taking a hard look at that, but they did a, did a great job of pushing that, like I say, over the, over the goal line. And, and I shared this with Andy and Shota, I was over at, good to go over here, picked up a drink before our meeting here, and they've got a card up there by the cash register that, "Thank you, community." Have you seen that, Chase?
Yeah, they were taking donations, so they would round up when you purchased them.
Round up, and they've collected over $1,000 towards the splash pad. Yes, yes, so, "Thank you, community." A lot of folks stepped up and gave, gave contributions and donations, and we thank you, and say, truly another, another Manito Mountain type adventure, but Andy and Wendy, thank you very, very much. Okay, Rochester DZA and Council on Aging, Councilman Smith?
Unbeknownst to you guys, everybody that's absent seated me all of their time, so I'm sitting there relaxed, especially here at. BZA meets tomorrow, and there's two things on the agenda, which is their shortest agenda for, I think, yet this year, so they, on Wolf's Point, there's somebody that wants to add a covered attached deck to their home, and it's going to be where they need a variance, and the other one is a new building being constructed at 412 West 11th, and they need a little variance. So, those two things are on the agenda tomorrow, and it probably won't take very long. The Fulton County Council on Aging, we met yesterday, and we had about an hour-long meeting, and it was very positive in that building and, and in the room. Things are picking up at the center, and so, Transpo report, because trips have been on the increase in the month of September, they averaged over 60 rides a day, and, and so far, in the month of October, they're averaging more than 90 trips a day. So, there was a big increase in trips from September of 2020 to September of 2021, so the new hours are helping, and people are, are getting back into calling Transpo, which has hired a new driver yesterday, and so, so they're going to be adding more trips, so that's, that's exciting. RSP report was very encouraging, and has been busy, and was in Fall Conference over in Shishawana about three weeks ago. Tomorrow, heading for a conference that White Star is putting on, and it's a conference to let RSP groups know what trips are available, what they're thinking for next year, and so the center's working on putting together a spring program and summer program for their trips. There are, I will tell the community, there are still eight seats left for the trip to Branson, at $699 a person with double occupancy, and they're very excited about that. It's a day after, leaves the day after Thanksgiving. Friday, there is a Halloween party, starts at 9:30 with bingo. It transitions from bingo to chair volleyball, which has been a big hit out over there, and well-attended, and I've kinda committed to go play, so-
Wednesday?
Wednesday? Well, I don't know that I'm going to play on Friday, but it, it's Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, right after bingo, is chair volleyball. And it's, you do literally sit in a chair, and there, there are some folks in wheelchairs. It's, I've talked to a couple that have played. It's, it's pretty fun and good exercise for the group. And then-
Do you suppose we could get a city team at Stafford?
And then on Friday, with the Halloween party, it's gonna transition into lunch, so-
You roped us into dodgeball.
Be a, be a good day over there. And-
I think we still got our sheriffs.
You.
Yeah. Sorry, yeah. We've had city dodgeball teams here until the COVID thing, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I see my, my two chiefs out there not looking real happy about that. They were main participants in the dodgeball thing. We go play the junior high kids, you know?
Remember that comment about being exhausted?
Yeah.
Play dodgeball with him as a cheerleader.
Now, you know, the first one we went to, they told me, "Well, it's only gonna be a few games." What was it, six hours? It was one after another. We had the whole school! Yeah.
They got to rest in between, but we didn't.
I'm pretty confident that the center doesn't have the stamina for six hours.
For six hours, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It, it has been, there, there just is a good, positive-
That's good.
-feeling and, and energy about that building, and it's picking back up, so barring questions, that's the extent of my report.
Have you, have you had any other discussions about the, the ownership of the garage building?
Had a discussion, and I've, I've got a call out to Greg Heller, who may have some other information that-
I had another thought. I mean, we know approximately the timeframe for that. There's gotta be in the library, all sorts of stuff on the New Sentinel archives, I'm sure, tons of stuff there. We'll go research that, and I may just go do that for you. Of course, Wes is always available, lets down the basement and dig through all the old papers, or you don't really have to-
Road command zone.
Basement, yeah.
No, they're upstairs. I don't think you wanna go in our basement, it's kinda scary.
Oh, okay. But no, I thought about that, yeah, I'm sure it's all over the papers from back then, the situation. So, okay, good. Anything else for Councilman Smith? Thanks, Marty, appreciate your report. Tree Board and EMS, Brian?
I was on a stake for the tree board meeting, I've not seen the minutes for that yet, so I assume they met, but beyond that, I don't know.
I, as I, and I'm gonna be semi-accurate, I'm sure, Eric Biddinger came in to let me know that the, the tree board meeting last Thursday, they had a representative from Duke, and their arborist program, and they're working with the tree board to donate some trees for the city to, to plant, so that's gonna be a nice, nice thing coming up. And the tree inventory is complete, that's done. So, yeah, they've, they've done some nice things and moving along, and, by the way, Randy, we need to be cognizant of the fact if we remove a tree or something, we need to make note- need to make note of it and we'll get it to them so they can keep their inventory up. Make, make note to self if we take down a tree.
Well, or storm damage, that's the other one.
Or storm damage.
If we have, if anything comes down and there's storm damage and one, that's the other one we need to make sure we get over to the tree board too, if it's in the tree lawn.
I mean, I, I think maybe I'll ask you, if you will, to make note, go to the next tree board meeting, because now they have it complete, they just, and they were putting together their system to make sure that we are working together to, to make that, so it's, it's seamless and it works well. So if you'd make a note to go to the next meeting, I think they would appreciate that. Okay. Water Board, Garrett's not here. That's, that's about all there is. Any legal issues, Randy?
No, I did help the Water Board complete its purchase of a property that moved somewhere I don't always report, but typically at least once a month, there's some type of ordinance violation I appear in court on. Often that's a default judgment, the first issue. They get sometimes those shows, sometimes they show an egregious judgment. Every once in a blue moon, they'll show and contest it and we'll set a contested hearing that has, I think we had one earlier this year, but it's been a while. So that, that still goes on and assisted with drafting some things like the resolution you passed tonight and got some information from Eric of Baker Tilly about the regulatory restrictions on, on the art funding and things like that, so some kind of stuff. Continues to go on.
Yes. And I know we keep you pretty busy too and I, I thank you for that. Seems like there's always something. Appreciate it. Well, that pretty much concludes the agenda. I would add to your motion.
Two second.
Goodman made the motion.
One second.
Seconded. Favor. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Don't forget, Boofest is Friday night.
Boofest Friday night. Tree to Tree is Sunday, from 5:00 to 7:00.
I've seen it on Facebook, 4:30 to 5:30.
Yeah, 4:30 to 5:30.